In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10, 4-6, PL 1975, C 231 S 1, amended 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 8th, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin boards, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8th, 2021. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Abes Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
I am here. May we please stand for the flag? Sir Superintendent, do we have any presentations?
No, we do not have any presentations this evening. However, I would like to take the moment to give some reflections in terms of our summer school. Right now, we are operating with our ESY with 47 students. Our Bradley Elementary has 81, and our Thurgood Marshall 51, and our preschool disabled have five students. We've also rectified the Moesk situation regarding transportation, which was not only here in Asbury Park, but also in Monmouth County. They had issues with service drivers, which impacted us in our opening of summer school. Okay? Other than that, we'd like to recognize student Carla Hernandez Reno for the bridle coming in third in the country. In our summer school, we actually posted that on our social media. And that is all.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the floor for the open public participation part of our program.
Madam, can we... About the search?
Okay, yes. Madam Vice President, we'll be reading the statement first, and then we'll be opening up the floor.
This is an update from the board members that are conducting the search for a new superintendent. As many of you know that Dr. Sandra Gray resigned her position of superintendent of schools on June 30th, 2021. The Asbury Park Board of Education has entered into contract with New Jersey School Boards Association to facilitate the search process for a new superintendent of schools. Our New Jersey School Board Association consultant is Kathy Weincoff, has developed four Survey Monkey tools to help gather community input from residents in Asbury Park, as well as administrators and staff, input from our schools, and from our Spanish and Haitian-Criole speaking community members. This information gathered will be used to shape a variety of candidate review documents and interview questions. All inputted is anonymous, and no email or identifiable information is needed to complete the survey. All data provided in the surveys will first go to New Jersey School Boards, and will then be provided to the Board of Education to assist us in selecting a candidate to interview, candidates to interview, develop interview questions, and select the finalist. The links to the survey are already posted on the district website, and they will also be mailed to staff and community. Surveys will be live and accessible through Monday, August 16th, 2021, and I hope everybody participates, or we do also. I can speak for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, we will be opening the floor for public participation. Please come to the mic, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lyons of 1701 Ocean Avenue here in Asbury Park. I'm representing the statewide education committee, organizing committee, as well as a faction of residents that live in the Asbury Towers. My question, well, first of all, greetings. It's good to see you, and thank you for your service to us in our community. And I stand once again to offer whatever I can do. I know I'm one, but I can make a difference, and I'm sure that's the mindset of those of us who are here. But I was going to ask, in regards to the superintendent search, would there be any community involvement? Is that what I heard, that there is a survey available to the public, and so we can be a part of that? Good, thank you. Also, looking at the funds that have been issued for ESER and ARP, will there be community involvement with that? Is that a consideration? If not, we would like to say, on behalf of those that I represent, if we could have that available to our community at large, to be a part of the engagement of using those funds, generating accountability as well as transparency. The Amistad curriculum, according to New Jersey law, has directed all New Jersey schools to incorporate African-American history into their social studies curriculum. Is that being implemented in our district? Okay, that's one. And then the last is, is there a plan in place to either replace or thoroughly repair our air filtering system? If it isn't, could there be a consideration for the purchasing of air filters or air cleaning units to be placed in the classrooms to ensure, you know, healthy environment for the teachers as well as the students? So I would appreciate if I could, you know, get a feedback on those issues that I presented to you. And once again, we're here to work with you, not against you. I know you hear a lot, we hear a lot, but I stand to say, I would want to be a part of the resolve more so than the confusion. Thank you. Can anyone address those issues for me?
Thank you, Ms. Beverly.
Okay.
Jeff, would you like to address the HVC stuff?
Sure. So, to two of your questions. One is the input on the Esser funds.
Yes.
So, the Esser III or American Rescue Plan funds that were provided to the district, part of that plan required us to put out a survey about safe reopening, and that survey was done last month, and we received about 65 to 75 responses from parents and staff members and community members about any concerns they might have about reopening. Some of those did include HVAC systems, and filtration, and masks, and sanitation, you know, cleanliness, sanitizing surfaces, those sorts of things. So, those are all things that we have been doing. In terms of the HVAC systems, we've been working with the district architect and engineer to allocate funds from Esser II to replacing rooftop units and energy recovery units, which will enhance our HVAC system at both Bradley and the Thurgood Marshall School. The high school has been fully renovated HVAC-wise as of maybe two years ago, with a heating system replacement, and then an air conditioning addition to the building. So that's been in place fully for about two years now. We are also looking at redoing all the unit vents in the classrooms, both here at Bradley and at the upper elementary, Martin Luther King School. So those are all projects that are planned that'll improve our HVAC system. The maintenance of the HVAC system as it currently stands includes changing filters. You may have heard about filter types and, you know, standards for filters, and folks recommending a certain number, a MERV 13, or, you know, something to that effect in terms of what number filter we should use, and those are the densest filters, and therefore you would think would filter out the most. However, the equipment itself has its own limitations, and its proper function is, you know, based on the flow of air through the system. So we use what's recommended by the manufacturer in terms of the best filtration we can get that that unit will support. So that's being done, and those filters are checked monthly and changed as needed, but changed fully on a quarterly basis. So, the district is moving forward on all those fronts in terms of air quality and those issues.
Okay. In regards to the survey, that you said there were about 65 responses, was that posted on the website?
Yes. So, there was a call-out, similar to you would get on a snow day or one of those sorts of things. We did a mass call-out to the town advising them of the survey, and the survey link was on the front homepage of our website in both, I believe it was in all three languages. I'd have to double-check, but I believe it was in all three languages.
Okay.
The mass call was to parents, though, in district, right?
Probably the parents, yes.
Because those are the numbers that we have in our system.
Okay.
The current parents.
So the current parents received that survey?
Correct.
Versus the fact that it was not sent to the general public?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be...
Right. So we wouldn't, so that's through a calling system?
Okay.
Or text, and we wouldn't have, for example, if you don't have a child in the district?
Right.
We wouldn't have your information.
Okay.
But it was posted on the homepage and available for folks that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Beverly, the Survey Monkey is already posted, though, so you can go onto our website for the Survey Monkey for the superintendent search.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, I can mention the Amistad. We have, we're probably, we were probably at the forefront of implementing the Amistad Commission's recommendations here in the district, so they are embedded in our curriculum, not only in social studies, but in other subject areas where appropriate.
Okay, so I can view that on the website, but under curriculum?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Carrie Clark. I'm also from 1701 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Towers. The only question I have is the one you didn't answer of hers, and that is, is there African, Afro-American studies in the curriculum? I didn't hear an answer to that one.
He just answered it, Ms. Clark.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I was wondering, too, if there'd be more, if there is a curriculum that includes not only that, but more diversity, that that would be like a normal thing across the board?
Our curriculum is very robust in that department. We try to be very inclusive of all, not only when we talk about race, African-American, but also gender studies and so forth. So we try to cover the gamut.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
I'm Patricia Jelly, also from 1701 Ocean Avenue. And we are, as many of you know, at Asbury Tower, we're a very diverse population, which is wonderful, and it really and truly helps us to come together. And we have recently started a relations, racial relations group within Asbury Tower. And both Beverly and I did, you know, we went through the curriculum, you know, and we really and truly did not see specifically how the children, young adults, the teenagers, are able to deal with something which we know is a, you know, an issue without our, throughout our country, let alone in Asbury Tower. So, you know, it just is very important that we see this, and we weren't able to see it. It's something certainly on the first grade level, where it said to determine fairness, equality, and the common good, and how that influences new laws and policies. But we really did not see specifically, so does it depend upon the individual teacher of social studies or whatever throughout the curriculum? We looked from pre-K to 12th grade, so.
I did receive your letter a while back.
Yes.
Regarding, and I will be more than happy to sit with you guys. I'm actually looking forward to meeting with you after the meeting, so we could discuss some of the items that you are talking about. And I'll be happy to show you where that, where these items reside in our curriculum.
Fine. That's great. And we do appreciate your service to the community, because as a former educator, I know how extremely important, and we know how extremely important, education is for, you know, our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jelly. Jeff, do we have any emails or phone calls?
We have no emails to our public comment.
We have no phone calls.
Mr. Brannigan, do we have any comments from the public on our webex?
At this time, we will be closing the public participation portion. And we're going to...
To the residents of the Asbury Tower, first of all, I want to thank you all for your collaboration in getting together. I think this is more or less a response to some of the issues related to critical race theory that is going on around the country. New Jersey has always been at the forefront of inclusive instructional practices, and the Amistad curriculum has been something that has been the forefront in New Jersey for at least 10 to 15 years at a minimum. So that's not one of the issues that we have to confront and deal with. I think education of itself is still dealing with implicit bias, and that's something that is ongoing. We are very much aware of that in all of our practices. As Mr. Ruiz has indicated, we are always revising our curriculum, but more importantly, we are a social, emotional learning district. We have Dr. Kristy Morris here, who's also embedded in looking at some of microaggressions and how we deal with disciplinary standards. We're also looking at addressing the issues of suspensions of our Black students. So those are things that we are looking at addressing, rectifying, and problem-solving on a regular basis, not only in our instructional practices, but in our leadership, as well as within the board's interactions in of itself. So I do hear the root of what your concerns are related to what's going on nationally, but that is not something that we here in New Jersey have to worry about, and it's definitely not going to be legislated out of our instruction, not only here in Asbury, but throughout the state.
Madam State Monitor, do you have a report for us? Okay, no report?
I think this is a board call, so we can go to the room.
Okay. Mr. Remy, do you want to introduce the item that you wanted us to vote on tonight?
So the item that I actually asked to vote on would be the naming of fields, the Bradley Elementary School after Mueller Lewis, and the middle school field after James Familar.
May I please have a motion?
If I, if I may, I'm not saying you need to do it this way, but if the board would like to, you can take that as two separate motions, or you could vote on it all as one. That's up to the board. But just so everyone is clear, to the extent there's a motion on the floor, it appears that the motion will be for, to name after both gentlemen, so a yes would be a yes to both. Just wanted to put it out there.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Remy, could you split it up to two different motions, just in case, you know, somebody might want to vote, yes, no, whatever?
Okay.
Not grouping together?
Okay. So, naming the Bradley Elementary Soccer Field after Mueller Lewis?
May I please have a motion?
Move it.
Any discussion or questions? Just so the public knows, we, we got the materials ahead of time, so.
Can I ask a question, just in terms of, we're naming the field after, after Mueller Lewis, is that how you say his name? Is, is there going to be any way to kind of, any kind of explanation of his historic significance and all that at the field? Like, is there any way we can get that donated from, from an organization or anything? Just so folks don't just forget or know what, you know...
Well, I'm sure we can try to get donations to do a plaque that would, that would kind of summarize his achievements.
Yeah.
The one thing, could you just explain a little bit? I know I read the resume, it wasn't, it had a couple things in it. Could you explain so that the public knows why you're suggesting that the...
Sure. So, he went through Asbury Park School District, he's Haitian as well, as so was me, and he did a lot for the, for the community here. He inspired, he's a business owner, has property, great soccer player, influenced a lot of us to play soccer, and, you know, go towards higher education as well. And unfortunately, he passed away due to a tragic car accident. So, it was brought to me from the community, because there's children playing there all the time, and we thought it would, and thought it would be a nice thing, so I'm like, okay, sure. So I brought it up to the board, and just to, you know, so everyone could remember his name, remember the things that he did for us, the inspiration, the motivation, especially being here in America as an immigrant is very hard, and the fact that we know someone that, you know, progressed here and did a lot of good things.
He ran a couple of rec programs, too, for the local children, soccer teams organized. He organized a couple of professional soccer teams for adults. He used to play there in Wall on Route 18, and then organized games here for the children.
Just wanted to honor him in that way.
So we have a motion on the floor? And a second?
Thank you, Madam President. This is for the naming of the Bradley Elementary Soccer Field after Mr. Lewis. Mr. Grillo?
As a son of immigrants myself, yes.
Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Etienne?
We.
Motion carries.
And the second one, to naming the middle school field after James Familar. He also, from Asbury Park, went through the district, a lot for the district, the community, and that was also brought to the attention from the community, and just wanted to honor him. He also passed away due to a tragic accident. So, just feel as though to, you know, for the community to have some type of representation, remember the name, and just remember him, so want to honor him in that way. So all in favor?
No, we need a motion. Move it!
Oh, okay.
Moved by Mr. Grillo, second. Ms. Etienne?
Discussion or question? Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
This is for the naming of the athletic fields at the Martin Luther King Upper Elementary Field after Mr. Familar. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Same.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
I have to abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Both motions passed? Good.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, we'll be entering the board's goals into record?
It's not on the agenda. It was omitted, and I want, I'll read it, because the public doesn't have it. These are the 2021, 22 Board of Education goals. We had a meeting with Kathy Weincoff, and we developed three goals. One, to successfully complete the superintendent search for the next educational leader of the school district. Two, to develop operational norms between the board and the superintendent, interim superintendent also, and an action plan to include quarterly feedback updates on educational programs and process. And then the third goal is to develop and implement a plan for continuous board professional development with ongoing board training. And those are the three, three goals that I want to add to the agenda for vote.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Okay, at this time, we'd like to accept the minutes.
We need a motion to accept the...
I'm sorry. Can I please have a second?
Mr. Grillo, move. Second by Ms. Etienne.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. We have acceptance of the minutes, please.
Could I have a motion for the minutes on page A1, 10A through D?
I'll move it.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Staying on D. Thank you. Ms. Cook?
I abstain on all.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? All items carry.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Dr. Adams, may I ask for consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd ask for consent agenda from B1 through B5.
Move it.
Roll call please. Any comments or questions?
There's one item, may I, I'm going to change my motion. There's one item we haven't been updated on. The one personnel item.
So if there's a motion on the floor, did we give a second, Mr. Hastings?
I made the motion, I'd like to...
So why don't you withdraw the motion, then?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. And then if, to the extent you'd like to make a different motion, now would be the time.
I'd like to make a motion, consent, not a consent agenda, all items except for B, on B4, number six.
We'll discuss it when we get back.
Discuss, yeah. That's my motion. B4, number six.
Who's that? No, that's administrative lead. B46 is administrative lead.
B4, maybe it's the wrong one, Barbara.
Barbara, B46 is administrative lead. I don't know who this is.
I'm going to, well, it hasn't been seconded, so I'm just going to make a motion, consent agenda. I had an explanation.
Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Hastings, roll call.
This is all items B1 through B5. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
All items, yes, I abstain on, excuse me, B2F.
Thank you. Ms. Cook? Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Sabes Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number two.
Could I have a motion for goal number two?
Go next.
Goal number two, host six monthly virtual parent meetings with the superintendent to ensure meetings are held specifically for our ELL population.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Setien?
We do the Merit Goals first, Jeff? Could you read the first one for me?
Okay. So, we are taking number eight on page C3 for Merit Goals for 2021 school year. I need a motion to approve goal one for the superintendent's Merit Goals for 2021.
And that's the...
In conjunction with key stakeholders, we'll develop and create bi-quarterly holistic student family support newsletters.
That's the newsletter one.
That's the SEL newsletter.
Can I have a motion?
And it's a motion to approve, just so that we're all clear?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Sabes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number two.
Could I have a motion for goal number two?
Go next.
Goal number two, host six monthly virtual parent meetings with the superintendent to ensure meetings are held specifically for our ELL population.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anybody have anything to add? Motion to adjourn then?
Move it.
Move it.
All in favor? Opposed?
All in favor.
Thank you. [APPLAUSE].
Okay. At this time, we'll be entering the board's goals into record? It's not on the agenda. It was omitted, and I'll read it because the public doesn't have it. These are the 2021-22 Board of Education Goals. We had a meeting with Kathy Weincoff, and we developed three goals. One, to successfully complete the superintendent's search for the next educational leader of the school district. Two, to develop operational norms between the board and the superintendent, interim superintendent also, and an action plan to include quarterly feedback updates on educational programs and process. And then the third goal is to develop and implement a plan for continuous board professional development with ongoing board training. And those are the three goals that I want to add to the agenda for vote.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Okay. At this time, we'd like to accept the minutes.
We need a motion to accept the court calls.
Sorry. Can I please have a second?
Mr. Grillo, move. Second by Ms. Setien.
Any questions or comments? No? Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Setien?
Abstain on all.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. We have acceptance of the minutes, please.
Could I have a motion for the minutes on page A1, 10A through D?
I'll move it.
Questions, comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Setien?
Yes.
Ms. Sabes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Dr. Adams, may I ask for consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd ask for consent agenda from B1 through B5.
Move it.
Roll call, please.
Any comments or questions? There's one item. May I? I'm going to change my motion. There's one item we haven't been updated on. The one personnel item.
So, if there's a motion on the floor, did we give a second, Ms. Hastings?
I made the motion. I'd like to...
So, why don't you withdraw the motion then?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. And then if, to the extent you'd like to make a different motion, now would be the time.
I'd like to make a motion, consent, and not a consent agenda, all items except for B, on B4, number six.
We'll discuss it when we pass it.
Discuss, yeah. That's my motion. B4, number six.
Who's that? No, that's administratively. B4, six is administratively.
Oh, B4. Maybe it's the wrong one, Barbara.
Barbara, B4, six is administratively. I don't know who this is. I don't know who this is.
I'm going to, well, it hasn't been seconded, so I'm just going to make a motion, consent agenda. I had an explanation.
Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Hastings, roll call.
This is all items, B1 through B5. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Sabes Anderson?
All items, yes. I abstain on...
Excuse me, B2F. Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Yes, and we're paying the bills, right?
Yeah, you're all abstaining on the bills.
I need to abstain on a few ones, so abstain on...
You can abstain on all bills if you like, I think.
I'll abstain on all bills. How about that? I like to be exact, but that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? And Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, on all items. I'll abstain on B, what is it, B number 14?
C5.
C5, number 14.
Thank you. All items, carry.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
We have, are we going to do the other item, or are we going to go into closed first?
We can do the other item. What item is it?
Okay. That's item eight on page C3.
We'll do it after. So, at this time, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now, therefore, it be resolved that July 22nd, 2021, Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined described below, upon return, action may be taken.
And for the members of the public who are present and also virtually present, the board will be entering executive session for the purpose of a grievance hearing, to discuss personnel matters, to discuss contract matters, and to receive attorney-client advice and information. It's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately one hour, after which time the board will return to this room and to public session and will take action. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Someone move it, please?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to open back to public. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Sabes Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Setien?
We do the Merit Goals first, Jeff? Could you read the first one for me?
Okay. So, we are taking number eight on page C3 for Merit Goals for 2021 school year. I need a motion to approve goal one for the superintendent's Merit Goals for 2021.
And that's the...
In conjunction with key stakeholders, we'll develop and create bi-quarterly holistic student family support newsletters.
That's the newsletter one.
That's the SEL newsletter.
Can I have a motion?
And it's a motion to approve, just so that we're all clear?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Sabes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anybody have anything to add? Motion to adjourn then?
Move it.
Move it.
All in favor? Opposed?
All in favor.
Thank you. [APPLAUSE].[1777.12]